Is Scott here? He's our alternate. Yeah, okay. There we go. I would like to call to order the September 17, 2019, meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Stephen Mans.
Here.
Todd McLeod.
Here.
Peter Pivko.
Here.
Deborah Rain.
Here.
Andres Perdolo.
Mark Paytman.
Here.
Christopher Chase.
Here.
Scott Holtz. Let the record reflect that Scott Holtz is not present.
Next order of business is approval of the July 16, 2019 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Are there any corrections or amendments? And if not, may I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Motion second?
Second.
Sorry, Deborah?
Second.
Thank you. A motion is second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is a report of the planning staff. Ms. Vance.
Good evening, Board members. Good to see you back after a one-month break. Angela Van Plann and his own administrator give you a brief update of cases that's been heard since the last time you met her and approved by the City Commission. First was the August 12, 2019 City Commission meeting, and all these cases were approved by a four-to-zero vote. The first two, actually, two cases was Palm Beach Medical Group's commercial plan development, which is located in the downtown master plan area, but we still had some CPDs that had to approval. So this was a cleanup to come through, and we zoned it to the underlying DMP zoning district, as well as for the northwest center CPDD also to come through and rezone those back to what the existing underlying downtown master plan zoning yesterday. And then September 9, 2019, all of these cases were approved by a five-zero vote. The first ones were DMP script notes errors was basically to go through the code and do some changes, some errors that they had in the code, and Commission again approved that. And the last one was miscellaneous changes to the DMP. One of the ones, I think, I don't know if you guys had a discussion about the required retail furniture and the gyms, and that part was added to the required so you can have gyms and yoga studios along that way, and that was also approved by the Commission. Any questions?
Okay, any questions of staff? Thank you. Next on the agenda are remarks by the chairperson, of which I have none, that then bring us to the Declaration of Ex parte Communications, says they won't have anything to disclose.
Yes, I have a conflict on Planning Board case 1831. Our firm provided the civil engineering for that project, so I'll be recusing myself and leaving the chambers during that case.
All right, thank you. We now move to the public hearing portion of the meeting and swearing in of speakers. Would everyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening, please stand up and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. If anyone wishes to speak and has not yet turned in a card, I would ask that you do so, and please hand it to the clerk. Next on the agenda are continued cases, of which there are none, which will then bring us to Planning Board case number 1831. Goodbye. Okay, the applicant is Amato Millan Development, and I understand the applicant's presentation will be made by Michael Sanchez of Managed Land Entitlements.
That's correct. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Let me find the presentation here. My name is Michael Sanchez. I'm with Managed Land Entitlements. I'm a land development manager and a certified land planner. Here with me tonight is Alexander Millen. He's the, one of the, with the development group, and Stephane Claren with Claren Architecture. He's the project architect. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. We're excited to present to you the Mercer Park Apartments project. I tried to keep the presentation as brief as possible while making sure to cover all the information that's important, so I'll try to get through the presentation as quickly as possible. Just a summary of the request. The applicant is Amato Millen Development LLC. This is a request for rezoning from the multifamily medium-density residential MF-20 zoning district to the multifamily high-density residential MF-32 with a further rezoning to residential plan development. The project is a 51-unit multifamily apartment project, and the property is 1.6 acres at the northwest corner of Alpha Street and Mercer Avenue. This is a small-scale aerial of showing the project site with the red arrow and the surrounding areas. You have Interstate 95 and Australian Avenue to the west. To the north is Okeechobee Boulevard. To the east is Parker Avenue and the, I believe they call it the West Palm Beach Stub Canal. And again, the property is shown there in red. I wanted to draw the Board's attention to the area in yellow that is referred to by the city as the Jefferson Terminal District. It contains a mixture of light industrial, commercial, multifamily, and single-family uses. The proximity to downtown and recent development activity in the area has caused the city to initiate a study of the area, to analyze the existing development regulations, and also to explore updates to the city's code to encourage redevelopment activities. I can't speak to the specifics of what's being considered, but some of the things that I've heard being discussed are increased density with diverse housing, enhanced pedestrian and mobility improvements, enhanced streetscape improvements, enhanced open space, centralized parking, and expansion of allowable uses while preserving the light industrial nature of some of the areas. I wanted to highlight a couple of projects in the Jefferson Terminal District. Our property is shown here in red, and I'll show you a better aerial of that on the next slide. The project here in green is referred to as the Warehouse District. It's a mixed hub of restaurants and retail. It's very popular, and I believe it was one of the first significant redevelopment activity in this area. The property, property shown in orange referred to as the District Flats or the Clare Avenue Mixed Use Project. It was approved by the city in April of 2019. Pod A, which is the, kind of the larger parcel there, was approved for 178 multifamily units and just under 4,000 square feet of commercial space. The approved site plan shows a six-story building. The property, and with the density of 32 units per acre, the property on the, along the canal here was not site planned, but it was approved for 133,000 square feet of commercial space. This is a larger-scale aerial of the project site. You have Old Okeechobee Road here to the north, Mercer Avenue to the east, and Alpha Street to the south. This property was comprised of three separate parcels. So you have the westernmost parcel here, which is vacant. We have a small 0.2-acre parcel in the middle, which up until a couple of weeks ago had a single-family home on it. It has since been demolished. And then on the east side, there's about a 0.7-acre parcel, which is also vacant. I wanted to draw your attention to the alley, which will remain. It bifurcates the property, running north-south. That is a platted 12-foot-wide alley, and there's also an alley along the northern boundary, which is also proposed to remain. This shows the adjacent uses to the subject property. To the west, we have office uses. To the north, we have a contractor's office and outdoor storage. Also to the north is a large warehouse with some outdoor storage on the, on the south side of the property. Also to the north, there's a couple of multifamily buildings. There's a used car dealership on the corner there. And then directly adjacent to us to the north is a multifamily residential structure. We had pursued the purchase of that property, but for a few different reasons, it didn't work out. On the east side, you have a mixture of single-family with some multifamily. And then on the south side, you have all multifamily, which is a mixture of single-story and two-story units. Because this is an infill project, I wanted to just take a couple of quick minutes to go through some photographs here to give the Board an idea of the existing fabric of the area. So this is a photograph looking onto our site from Mercer Avenue. This is on Alpha Street, looking at the, at the easternmost parcel. This is a photograph of the house that was existing up until a couple of weeks ago, part of our property, and then this is the westernmost parcel. This is the westernmost parcel. You can see all the way through to Old Okeechobee. This is a photograph of the alley, so looking north, so you see the warehouse building and the outdoor storage. This is, our property is immediately to the south of this. On the right side is our property, and then some multifamily uses to the north. This is a view on Alpha Street. Our property is on the left-hand side. You can see there's multifamily on the right-hand side with, with surface parking. And then this is a view from the same position, looking west. That's the I-95 wall and our property to the right. Just a few drone shots that we took from our property. This is looking, our property is here in the foreground. This is looking east. You see you have some single-family and some multifamily, and then there's some abandoned buildings here, and then beyond that, you have some industrial and warehouse uses. This is looking south, directly across the street, so you see you have a mixture of single-story and two-story multifamily with I-95 in the background. This is looking northwest. This is the warehouse building. This is the contractor storage, and this is Old Okeechobee Road with light industrial uses to the north of that. This is the alley. And then lastly, this is looking northeast. This is the little multifamily building just adjacent to our property in Mercer Avenue. This slide shows the future land use map of the city. All of the properties in brown are, contain the multifamily land use designation. This striping is, is a special impact zone, and it has some special environmental requirements. But basically, everything in the, in the brown is multifamily, including the property across the street. Once you get to the north, you have commercial uses, which are in red, and industrial uses, which are in gray. And this is the zoning map. Again, our property is shown in blue. Starting from the south, you have multifamily 14 zoning. Then you get into multifamily 20, which is across the street on the south side of Alpha. Along Alpha here, you have multifamily 14 on the east side, and then you have commercial uses and other commercial and industrial uses to the north. So existing today, as you go from south to north, it gets less intensive, and it grows more intensive as you get closer to, to the commercial uses along the major thoroughfares. We are proposing a rezoning to MF-32. Frankly, the increase in density was the only way that we can make the project work from a financial perspective and to justify, you know, $11 to $12 million investment into this area, which is really an untested market as it relates to multifamily. I'm always conservative when I make recommendations to my clients regarding rezonings, but when I looked at this property, I felt comfortable saying that the rezoning was appropriate for a few different reasons. One, it provides a logical transition going from MF-14 to MF-20 to MF-32 to the commercial uses, which are more intense to the north. It's consistent with the densities allowed in the future land use designation, and from a development perspective, we maintain the, the height limitation of the existing zoning district. So we comply with the MF-20 height limitation, which is 40 feet. Just wanted to show you the only previous approval that we know of. This is only for the, the corner parcel on Mercer and Alpha. It was a little 12-unit townhouse project that was approved back in 2005. So the next several slides will contain renderings of the project that, that I included early in the presentation to give the Board kind of a general idea of the project, and I'll get into some details as we, as we get a little farther along. Proposed is two, three-story buildings, 51 apartment units. They'll have one and two bedrooms, ranging from 700 square feet to 1,100 square feet. The L-shaped building will be on the corner here with the linear building along Alpha Street to the west. As you can see, the buildings have been placed along the street to create an urban feel, which is consistent with the tenants of new urbanism, which is something that is encouraged by the city's comprehensive plan and is consistent with other projects in the city and in these urban areas. The vehicular driveways will be at the rear of the property to be screened from view for, from passersby. They'll be building entrances along the fronts of the first-floor units, which encourages pedestrian activities on the adjacent roadways, and the building architecture generally follows a clean, modern theme. So I'll just go through some of the renderings. This is another aerial view. As you can see, the buildings are up against the street, and you have parking circulate, traffic circulation in the rear of the, of the site, and I'll get into a little bit more detail on the site plan. This is a view at the project entrance. So this is the, the main driveway with a 10-foot-wide pedestrian path along the, along the west side that was requested by staff. You see the modern architecture, a mixture of whites and grays with the dark window frames and dark railing. We think it's a very nice-looking project. This is a view from the street corner of Mercer and Alpha Street. You can see the front stoops going into the units. This is a cool sign that we thought, that's going to mirror what the Norton Art Museum did, is individual channel letters kind of mounted freestanding on that, on that overhang. This is a view from Alpha Street, looking west from the westernmost building. You can see there's going to be a decorative aluminum fence to provide at least some security or privacy coming into this area, and then again, the front stoops facing the street. You can see some of the vertical elements kind of come out a little bit, and this element here kind of goes up to provide some visual interest to the architecture. Excuse me. And this is a view from the parking lot side. As you can see, these are kind of the main entrances into the units. There's a decorative railing along the backside. You can see the stairs at the ends of the buildings and the elevator tower here in white. So this is the proposed site plan. Building A is the linear building on the, on the west side. It's 24 units. Building B has 27 units. It's the L-shaped building along the front. You can see the parking is, is in the rear. These are the building entrances on the first floor, which are sort of secondary entrances, but they are usable, and they, people hopefully will use them to encourage pedestrian activity, and then the main entrances to all the units are on the, on the backside. We are providing seven-foot concrete sidewalks along the backs of the buildings. There's a pedestrian system going throughout the whole property, all along the park here, along the sides of the building, and then new six-foot concrete sidewalks along the fronts of the buildings along Mercer and Alpha Street. I'll come back to the site plan, but I wanted to touch on what we're doing here at the central driveway. So this is the existing 12-foot platted alley, which is two-way today, and the city wanted to maintain that two-way traffic. And that's, I believe that's how most of the alleys are in the city. So it created a challenge for us, so what we did was, we lined up our outbound driveway or drive, travel lane with the alley, so that traffic coming down the alley could continue without making a turn. Traffic coming into the property will come here. There'll be a four-way stop condition. Traffic wanting to enter the project will go left or right. Traffic wanting to proceed north along the alley will proceed if there's no one coming south, and we've proposed a signage that basically warns drivers that this is a reduced-width two-way alley. Also wanted to point out, this is a 10-foot-wide pedestrian pathway that the city requested of us. They wanted to promote pedestrian and bicycle activity up and down the alley, and they didn't want it to conflict with the travel lane. So we're, we're proposing a condition similar to what you see at City Place and Clementis what they just did, which this is all that grade, similar to this. So there'll be pavers and bollards, and this will be all that grade, so it'll provide a smooth transition and very aesthetically pleasing design. Just want to point out some site amenities. This is a, about a 4,000-square-foot park that we're providing. There'll be a gazebo with four picnic tables. There'll, there'll be a grill, benches, and walkways, and some existing trees here. The buildings have amenities such as a pet wash, interior pet wash, a bicycle storage room. The, the owner is proposing to institute a bicycle sharing program. Will they provide bikes to the, to the, for use by the tenants as an amenity? The other building will have a lounge and a fitness center. This is where the office will be. We're providing two parking spaces for, with charging stations for electric vehicles. There'll be a ride-sharing parking space for Uber and Lyft-type uses. This is a special landscape feature in the center of the easternmost parcel. We're going to be relocating a very mature oak tree that's on the west side. It has a 50-foot canopy. We're going to be relocating into this area. You'll see it on the, on the landscape plan. And we think that's a, that's a great addition that actually was requested by the city. We are providing on-street parking along Alpha Street. East of the driveway, we could not provide it west of the driveway because there's no turnaround at the end of the street. This is a location for what they call micro-mobility. It's kind of the sky bike, bike-sharing thing that you see downtown. So if that program is ever instituted here in the Jefferson Terminal District, we have identified a, a location for that. We are providing new street lighting along Alpha Street and along Mercer Avenue, and we are preserving existing trees to the greatest extent possible. And lastly, a bike rack, as required by the city. Just wanted to touch on some site details. You have details of the benches, LED site lighting. This is the design of the central driveway, and then this is a detail of the railing that you'll see along the upper balconies and along the front patios of the first-floor The city's requiring us to perform some improvements to Mercer Avenue. Though we've spoken to some residents, and the speed of traffic along Mercer is a, is a big concern. This is also, I understand, an area that's part of the city's bicycle master plan, so we will be reducing the lane widths along Mercer Avenue. We'll be providing bicycle lanes on, on both sides of the street with a, with a buffer here. The details of this will be ironed out as we, as we go through the permitting process, and we are talking to some neighbors across here that have some concerns with the existing on-street parking, but we're working with the city and those neighbors on that. Just touching on the landscape plan, you can see there's a very dense landscape design. The site comprises 24% open space. All the minimum code buffers have been required. We have 10 feet along the south and along the east side, and five feet along the other property lines. The landscape plan meets or exceeds, or excuse me, exceeds the minimum requirements of the city code. We've provided substantial landscaping along the fronts of the building to provide, increase the aesthetic qualities of the project, and we've also provided street trees along Alpha Street and along Mercer Avenue. Next couple of slides are the two-dimensional architectural elevations of the buildings. So this is the more linear building to the west. This is the elevation that faces the parking lot, so there, you have stair, stair towers at the ends, and this is an elevator tower in the middle. These are the, this is the elevation facing the street. So you, you see the buildings are designed with a modern, contemporary style. We've incorporated cantilever balconies, angled parapets, as you see in these areas, and projections both horizontally and vertically to break up the massing of the buildings. The colors will be a mixture of white and grays with dark window frames and dark doors to provide some contrast and visual interest. We've provided single-man doors on the outsides of these buildings on the first floor, as requested by staff, to promote kind of the front stoop concept that you see in the more urban areas. The maximum height of the building is 38 feet. That's to the top of the parapet, where the, the code for both MF-20 and MF-32 allow you to go up to 40 feet, so we are within that requirement, and the mechanical equipment will all be hidden by the parapets. And this is Building B, kind of the same concept. This is the L-shaped building. You see the sign here. It's hard to see, but this is on the corner, you know, very similar design to the other building. We are requesting a rezoning to a plan development, and I just wanted to list some of the items that we are proposing to comply with the requirements of the Plan Development District. The code states that the intent of a Plan Development District is to encourage, through incentives, the use of innovative land planning and development techniques to create a more desirable and attractive development in the city. And those incentives include relaxing of certain requirements like height setbacks and lot dimensions, allowing an increase in density, so long as the density of the future land use is not exceeded, and permitting uses which are not normally permitted. So I just wanted to run through a few of the innovative components of the Mercer Park project. We've placed the buildings up against the street. We have a high quality of architecture. These will be premium rental apartments with a lot of amenities that, that I've touched on. We're widening the sidewalks and providing lighting along Mercer and Alpha Street. We are improving the alley, and we are improving the alley, alley all the way to the end of our property. Providing on-street parking. We're providing an open-space park with a gazebo. We are preserving trees and relocating a large oak tree. Mercer Avenue improvements that I touched on, providing parking for ride-sharing, electrical vehicle charging stations, extensive landscaping, and we are contributing to the city's Housing Trust Fund to the tune of about $252,000. This, we had been negotiating quite extensively with the city regarding the workforce housing requirements for this project, and it was determined that instead of providing the workforce on our site, that we would sort of pay in lieu of that. And then the last portion of the presentation is just touching on the waivers. We have five waivers, which we feel are very minor in nature. The first one is, the, the code requires a minimum of 10 acres when you're rezoning to a residential plan development. This is a relatively common waiver request. I don't know if there's many 10-acre tracts available for development, especially in the east part of the city. We've assembled three parcels to make this project as large as it is. We tried to get more, but, but we were unsuccessful there. We are, we're requesting the RPD to allow for an innovative design, and we've demonstrated compliance with those plan development standards. The second waiver is for the front setback. The code requires 25 feet. We are proposing 10 feet, and that is to bring the buildings up against the street. We didn't go any closer to the street so that we could maintain the 10-foot landscape buffer that's required along the roadways. If we were to provide a 25-foot setback, we would probably be placing the buildings in the back with the parking in the front, which we feel wouldn't provide for as nice of a project as we're proposing. The third one is for parking. The code requires 101 spaces based on the units that we're proposing. We are proposing 76 spaces, which is a reduction of 25 spaces. As part of our application, we provided a parking analysis to the city that was prepared by an engineer, and it's based on the ITE rate, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and that analysis demonstrated that we needed 63 parking spaces. We did not want to have a shortage of parking, so we're proposing 76. That provides for less pavement, more open space, and, you know, there is some on-street parking available in the area, so we don't feel like we're going to have a parking problem. Number four, the terminal islands. The code, there's a relatively new code that requires eight-foot-wide terminal islands. We have, and, and the city requires that to be the full length of the parking space. So because this site is, is kind of shallow, we had to provide some turning radiuses here. So we, what we did was, we went wider than eight feet at the wide part, but then we just need a little relief at the ends. This is on the west part, and this is in the main driveway. You see, we provided well over the eight feet. And lastly, there's a requirement for corner visibility. We encroach into that by about three feet, but the requirements in the code are, don't necessarily address this particular situation, in our opinion. So because this is set so far back, and we have such a large road shoulder here, we'll have plenty of visibility, and the city's engineering and traffic divisions, I don't believe, had any issue with this waiver request. And, and just some closing remarks. This will be an infill project that we feel will be another catalyst for investment and redevelopment in this Jefferson Terminal District area. We feel the increase in density is compatible with the surrounding uses and provides a logical transition as you go from MF-14 to MF-20 to MF, to commercial and industrial uses to the north. And the project includes numerous innovative design components and amenities which will help us have a successful project and raise the bar for future development in the area. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Let me start on this side, please.
The public art component, you're fine with, you didn't discuss where it might go. What's the story?
Apologize. So we are, we are going to be providing, the plan is to provide the art on-site. We're working with, my client is working with some artist's clients that, or contacts that he has, and we're looking at potentially doing something on the building, perhaps, but we're still looking at that, but we will comply.
No questions. Andre?
I have no questions, but it looks great.
Thank you.
Peter?
Just a small suggestion for you is, or the applicant is, for him to consider maybe installing some type of glazing on the stairwells for tenant's security, as opposed to having a completely solid vertical shaft.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a good, okay, thank you. Deborah? Any questions? All right. Staff, we will hear from next. Let me just, for those who may wish to speak this evening on this issue, if you have not filled in one of those cards, please do so and give it to the clerk.
Good evening, Planning Board members. Paul Gubelik, senior planner, for the record. So Mike did a great job. I'm just going to hit on some main points here. So first, as he said, it's, it's, the subject property is comprised of three parcels, 1.6 acres. It's within the JTD. There's been significant redevelopment in this area, specifically There's been significant redevelopment in this area, specifically adaptive reuse of industrial buildings. As you guys know, Grand View Market, Elizabeth Ave. And then new construction like district flats. You can see the JTD area there in green just south of the downtown core, the proximity of the subject property to recent redevelopment, as Mike touched on. And then just some images from this area, so it's really exciting what's going on there. Just some images of here, we got a Grand View Market there, the reconstructed rail line there. And then just a blurb from the city's website about the JTD. It's still an ongoing study. Stay tuned in the coming months, but basically it's exploring the possibilities for redevelopment, including regional transit, pedestrian oriented street network, and fostering a vibrant urban character. So stay tuned for that. So as Mike said, the current zoning is MF-32. What does that translate to right now? 32 units by right. The upzoning would allow for 51 units, so that's an increase in 19 units. He touched on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And then I wanted to commend the applicant and the developer. We did a lot of work upfront on this project even before the application was submitted, and I think it's kind of reflected in the site design. You can see all the careful considerations and the context, and I think that really came through in this project. And then lastly, the proximity to nearby amenities in the district, and then also the urban core. There's a lot of potential here. And then lastly, here we got a rendering looking northwest, and I think it's going to be a massive improvement for this site. I'm not going to go through the waivers. Mike did a good job of there, but staff is supportive of all five. And lastly, our recommendation is for approval with the conditions of the contribution to the Housing Trust Fund and the AIPP contribution. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, any questions of staff? Let me start on this side.
I have a question. If you go back a slide to, the slides you had up, yeah, that one. Yep. Number one, could you explain to me why it would have been, it seems like it's a, it's a big change from the way it was zoned. Could you explain to me sort of how that came about and how it might compare with other parts of the city and, you know, that, because of the character of this neighborhood appears to be changing?
I can speak to, I mean, the majority of projects, residential plan developments that have been approved in West Palm Beach, they're nowhere near 10 acres because the city is mostly built out, and what we're seeing now is more infill development. So recent approved projects have been, you know, two acres, I think 1.8 acres in that range. So there's precedent for this granting of this waiver. But it's just kind of the, it reflects the reality of the nature of development in West Palm Beach today.
So to play back what you just said, that number one is, makes it much more similar to projects that have been approved recently.
Yes, yes.
And whenever this was zoned, it, West Palm Beach was just really different, and the density was just...
Yeah, there's a number of residential plan developments, you know, west of 95 and the Village Boulevard area. Those are larger, but what we're seeing now is more development pressure east of 95 with larger assemblages of land. And so this is more consistent with what's been approved.
Thank you.
Right. Any questions of staff? No? No? Oh, go, please.
I have a quick question, maybe, maybe to Rick, too. I love the idea of the turning radiuses that the applicant is providing, and I'm wondering if it's a lesson to be learned here for future details that the city may want to consider. I can tell you that if, no matter what parking lot you go and you have your rectilinear islands, all you see in the corners is rubber marks. So would you take that into consideration for review in the future?
Yeah, that's something we can look at.
Andre, anything? Mark? Okay. All right. Thank you. Now, we have some cards from people from the public who wish to be heard, and let me start with Ron Dixon and Jim Englis. You guys can come forward. Excuse me, are you on the shed, Mr. Englis? It looks like.
Yes.
Okay, so forgive me on that one. Jim Englis, are you on this matter?
Yes.
Okay, please come forward. Ty Hawk, are you on this matter? If you could also come forward to the other lecturer. You have the timer, three minutes. I don't see it. We have this. All right, there are three minutes to speak, and I think our clerk will let us know when...
I'll say time.
Yeah, she's the official timekeeper. Please proceed, sir.
My name is Jim Englis, and I own a piece of property in the Jefferson Terminal District on the east end. And this is finally something that I'm seeing that is moving, somebody's taking a huge step in implementing and moving this thing forward. And I'm quite excited about it. It looks like a quality, quality project, well thought out, something that we really need to get this ball rolling, so I'm all for it. So, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Mr. Hawk, and then after that, Scott Schmidt, if you'll come forward of the other lecturer. Please proceed, sir.
Very much appreciate it. My name's Ty Hawk, and I own the piece of property directly behind it, which was referred to as the construction place. It's now Ragtops, which I moved from downtown and went over there. So I think Alex and his team is doing a great job. I'm looking forward to it, and I appreciate what the city's doing. I've been here for 40 years. I've seen a lot happen from my gas station that's now the Esperante. So it's been a long ride, so I'm real happy with the way we're going, and thank you very much for approving it if you can.
Mr. Schmidt, after that, Jacqueline Smith.
Hi, my name's John Schmid. I'm a commercial real estate broker. My office has been in the Clare Avenue District for 35 years. And I can't tell you how pleased I am with this project, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacqueline, Mr. Schmidt?
I'm on the sheds.
Forgive me. All right. Would anyone else in the public wish to be heard on this issue? If so, please come forward. And if not, we're bringing it back to the board for discussion and/or motion. Let me just ask, does anyone have any concerns about the proposed things? I mean, it seemed like it's a very good project to me. I don't know if you all feel the same way.
So do we do the conditions together and do the waivers separately?
Mr. Thomas, can you advise us on the smoothest way to move forward on this?
Yes, you're right, inquire. Does anyone have any objections to any of the waivers? If not, then you could do them collectively.
Okay. All right, I just want to say to the applicant, and this, I agree with what the public comments we've heard here, it looks like a quality project. Commend you, it looks like close cooperation with the city staff, strong support for the neighborhood, so we wish you great success with this. All right, who would like to make the motion?
I'll make a motion.
Everyone's fighting for that opportunity. You should...
Don't fight.
One second, Mr. Chair.
Uh-oh.
There's a pending change in the code which would have permitted doing number one with the others, but presently we'd have to do that...
Angela Van, remember we have to do the RPD, the size of the RPD waiver, you have to do a finding, you have to do that separate as a motion, separate from the other two, three, and four, and five waivers.
We can do that one separate and the rest combined.
Do the finding on that, yes.
Are you understanding, who's there prepared to make the motion? Do you understand?
Yeah. I'll make the motion to approve Planning Board Case Number 1831 with waivers with the...
Conditions.
With conditions.
Can we do one of these separate, Mr. Thomas? Are we doing this correctly?
You want to do the waivers first and then the...
And then the conditions.
The conditions when you approve the RPD. But initially, you would take your vote on the waivers.
Mr. Thomas, you might want to suggest the motion.
Can you just do a motion on number one, separate? And then you can do a motion on two, three, four, and five, together.
Is that the correct way? All right. One more shot, sir.
All right. We'll try this again.
We'll try it again.
Make a motion to approve Planning Board Case Number with waivers, number one, conditions, number, the one condition?
Two. Okay. Mr. Thomas, we may invite you to suggest a motion that one of us can adopt.
Motion to approve waiver number one.
Okay. Was that, was it you?
Yes.
That is your motion. Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously. Mr. Thomas?
And a motion to approve waivers two, three, four, and five, and then the RPD.
Is that your motion, Andre?
And yes, and then the RPD is the third one?
Yes.
We have the current motion. Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Third motion, sir.
Third motion is to pass Planning Board Case Number 1831 RPD.
And is that with conditions?
With conditions.
Conditions, second.
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Sorry about that.
That was, that was a mind field, Andre.
That was just a mind field.
All right. That then brings us to the code revision cases, and we'll begin with Code Revision Case 1801, and that will be presented by the Planning and Zoning Administrator, Angela Van.
Good evening.
Welcome back.
For the record, Angela Van, presenting Code Revision Case 1801. Just to give you a quick, this request is a city-initiated request to amend Article 10, our supplemental district regulations to regulate accessory structures, sheds. You heard this originally back in December 18, 2018, where you voted seven and zero in favor of the following recommendations, which was limit the size of the shed to 160 square feet, require size setbacks, five feet behind the primary structure for sheds, and then leave existing regulations for accessory structures, everything beyond sheds in place today. However, the city, staff took it to the City Commission on February 11, 2019. The commission directed staff to include regulations that would regulate the size of accessory structure just in the three neighborhoods, Echo Lake, North Shore, and Westfield neighborhoods. Therefore, what staff is proposing today is to come forward with regulations, again, to regulate the sheds as shown in the picture, and also regulate accessory structures. Supporting to note that, based on, over the years, regulations has been in the code since 2004, and only two issues that have arisen in this neighborhood, but staff has followed in the direction of the City Commission. Quick, this is a quick, just to give you basically the, over the three neighborhoods we're talking about, Echo Lake, Westfield, and basically North Shore neighborhoods in the north end of the city. So only be, affect these three communities. The analysis, the first issue was the 422 Nantona Avenue. That was the one that really came up and was the issue because of the size of this. The original code allowed you to build a home, accessory structure, 75% up to 1,000 square feet of the primary structure. At that time, it was allowed to build, and this structure's about 996 square feet, so it went to the max. And with the proposed regulation, staff is going to cut that in half from 75 to 25%, which would have permitted this structure as 558 square feet, a difference of about 437 square feet today. Again, it's just the neatness of the lot is shown in the bottom in that structure. We went through and tried to get some, these three neighborhoods have arch-shaped lots, just the way some of them were platted, so we just wanted to make sure, just pulling out lots and see what other lots or other homes could put on there. As you can see, 2001 Echo Lake Drive, about 612 would be permitted under the proposed regulations, up to 1,000 square feet under the existing regulations. 2878 Pinehurst, again, about 622 square feet. Hayden Avenue, basically about 514. And Nantona Avenue, six, about 600 square feet. So again, it's reducing these about half of what they could have done, about 400 feet to more what they could have done under the current regulations. And again, these are the arch-shaped lots. In traditional, as you see, most of the lots in this community, most of the homes are on the streets, anything built will be built in the back of the homes anyway, because on the place they can fit it and meet the, and meet the requirements of the setbacks. And also for sheds, but staff recommended 160. The neighborhood has asked for 120, and staff has gone, neighborhood witches and write the code down to 120. This basically give you, this is the proposed code changes, would be only for, the rest of the city would still be at 1,075% or 1,000 square feet. They will be at 25% of the grass floor area, not to exceed up to 600 square feet, in case you have some larger homes, wanting to make sure we limit it down to about 600 square feet. Setbacks will remain the same, and just to give you, setbacks remain the same, and the height will remain the same. The height will be about 25 feet is the current code today. And this is basically what staff is talking about for accessory structure. That one structure that got put up was unique, and most people don't build that type of structure in residential neighborhood. But these are the much, what we see throughout the rest of the city as accessory structure. And then for utility sheds, and tool sheds, again, be only be applied to those neighborhoods. And you can see it's basically 12 by 10, and no more than one permitted on the site. It has to be in the rear, five feet from the property line, and if it's put on the side, it has to be a minimum of five feet behind the front structure or the facade of the house. So you're five feet back, and again, as you saw by the map, most of the homes today don't have the room on the side to put it inside anyways, so most of them are going to re-ear the property. Based on the finding that the case meets all of the standards of Section 9432, staff recommends approval of CRC Case Number 1801. If you have any questions that you have.
Yeah, let me just start with a question. How is this different than what we were presented a few months ago, several months ago?
The difference would be, the first one was the size of the sheds, which were 160, now they're 120, and we originally were not, were not regulating the size of accessory structure. Remember, billing code distinguishes between sheds and accessory structures. We're leaving it under the existing code today, which would be in 1,000 square feet or 75% of 1,000 square feet, and we're reducing it to 25% of the actual structure up to a maximum of 600 square feet.
Permanent versus... And can I ask why these three neighborhoods are subject to the regulation, but no other neighborhood?
When we took this to City Commission, because these three neighborhoods, and I'm sure the representatives will be here to talk about it, those were the three that have gone before the commission that directed us to go back and regulate the regulations for these three neighborhoods. So the City Commission directed staff to write regulations for sheds and accessory structures for these three neighborhoods.
For these three neighborhoods, would it be more generous or less generous than what's allowed for the rest of the city?
Less.
Okay. All right. I appreciate it. Other questions? Let me start on this end. Any questions of staff first? Chris?
I just need to understand what you just found out. You're saying that this would be less generous than other neighborhoods in West Palm Beach?
Yes.
Okay.
And I assume maybe the neighborhood desires that. Is that your understanding?
Well, we sent out mailers to every homeowner within the three neighborhoods, and I've had sparring phone calls, and I'm sure some representatives are here to address that, but I've had...
Are they in favor or not in favor, or we'll find out?
The community, I'm sure, is in favor. I haven't had any phone calls, maybe one or two just asking for clarification.
Okay.
But nothing opposed or against.
Find out.
We'll find out. Stay tuned, as Paul had said. Questions, Deborah?
Ten to like 12, wow.
Peter, any questions? Okay. Andre, Mark?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you. I have a few cards. Ron Dixon, if you want to come forward. Jacqueline Smith, and those are the only two cards I believe I have on this. Does anyone else who I've not called wish to be heard on this matter? Andrew, why don't you proceed?
Ron Dixon, 3600 North Shore Drive, North Shore Neighborhood Association. We're trying to keep that monstrosity that occurred in the Echo Lake area, and as such, we had a committee formed to work on this sort of thing. And I'm pleased that the planning department has come up with 120 square feet for a maximum of the sheds. Speaking of sheds, there's no mention about a problem that I would perceive that ought to be corrected, and that is, it's okay if they're not going to be designed for the Florida Building Code, but they should be anchored down in some fashion, and there's several ways of doing that, so they don't blow over the neighborhood in a hurricane. The matter of accessory structures, we don't really see the need for accessory structures, and we think that that could proliferate some sort of problem that we've had already[1793.13] some sort of problem that we've had already with these large prefabricated metal buildings that have occurred. We don't think we ought to, we don't think we ought to allow sheds in side yards. Sure, we're going to screen them from the street, but what about the next door neighbor? We don't think we ought to, we don't think this shed should be in the side yards, should be just in the back. And as far as the accessory structures go, if you, we're glad to see they're 25% reduced, although we're generally opposed to the accessory structures. But still, you could have a 2,000 square foot house, you could have a 500 square foot accessory structure. And most of the houses in these three neighborhoods have garages already. So that's our concern. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jacqueline Smith, Westfield Neighborhood Association President. Chairman Manns, you told us that if we had a problem, you might see us back here. And we're back. You should know that the commissioners voted five to zero to send this back. And one of the reasons, to answer your question, Mr. Chase, these three neighborhoods are totally SF7. Every single residence in this neighborhood was plotted by Perini Development to be a single family neighborhood. We have no multifamily duplexes or anything. And the city is very well aware of that. So when we went before the commissioners and we worked with Ms. Van Jones, Jones Van, I'm sorry, I don't know if I said it wrong, on this issue, that is the reason that they looked at this. When it was presented to you before, it was a citywide ordinance. And we had asked from the very beginning that this ordinance be just for these three neighborhoods. We looked at the code, and we see codes in our city code that speak to one block or one street. So it's not unheard of in our city code. So we felt that it would be germane to our neighborhood if we could get something that would fit our needs. Accessory structures should not be allowed in our neighborhoods. And we appreciate some of the concessions that we've gotten from planning and zoning. But 25% of the structure will be as large as the largest structure that was built in the city of West Palm Beach in 2017 and 2018. If you remember the matrix that you were represented last time, you may or may not, it showed that only one oversized structure was built in the entire city. If this stays in this ordinance, the possibility of four of these structures could happen in the neighborhood that only has 148 homes. That's Echo Lake. The neighborhood of Westfield, which is my neighborhood, 104 homes, it won't affect us. Or in North Shore, which is 365 homes. But leaving an accessory structure, the ability to build something that large will affect a very small community. In my community of Westfield, it has 104 homes. There is a shed that is in a side yard. We're asking not to have that. There's only one shed in a side yard, I believe, in all three neighborhoods. That was allowed, and it's used as a business. This person had a dumpster in his driveway for seven years. And when they, we finally got it out, he built a shed in his side yard as close to his garage door so he can serve as his construction company. We don't have sheds in our side yard, and we have asked the city to please follow what we do have, which all of our sheds are in the backyard, in the rear yard. And the moment you leave this available, somebody is going to, to do something that we would not like. So I hope I have sort of given you why we're here, why it's just these three neighborhoods. We consider them unique, and we ask for these, this ordinance to speak to our unique needs. And we're pleased very much for the changes that have been made. But no accessory structures, please, and no sheds in the side yards.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Van, is she still here?
Yes.
Available. I couldn't see her over the podium.
Stand up.
I want to give you a chance to respond to what you heard, and then we may have some specific questions.
Well, two things, again. And when you deal with sheds in the neighborhoods, again, most of these neighborhoods are built with five feet minimum, 15 feet total setbacks. So they have five and 10. Most sheds, even a 10 by 12 shed, won't fit in the side yard because of...
It's just those few unique lots, right, the ones you pointed out?
Yes. I think what they're saying, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, they're saying they want, they don't want it all the way back. So from the front house, so in the back of the house, then we have a side setback that goes to the back property line. If I'm not mistaken, they do not want it actually to go back. They want it outside that setback, so directly behind the homes. That's what they meant by in the side setback. They did not want it in that side setback at all. So you have a five foot and a 10 foot going all the way back. They do not want it in that. And again, most...
And what's the city's position with regard to that?
City's position is the current code basically allows that five feet can't be set in the side.
As long as it's five feet away from the adjoining property?
The property line. And again, most of the homes in this neighborhood, most sheds won't fit. It'd be in the rear of the home anyway.
And what do you say about their request that there be no accessory structures allowed?
Well, one of the things staff is with the changing times and the cost of housing, again, accessory structure is just not, garages are just not units. They could be a bedroom with a bathroom for a child that's still at home, you know, and, or your mother or father. Still want a little independence, but may want to live right behind you. They come to the house and then go back to that, to their little unit, which is just a bathroom, a bedroom, and a, on the counter refrigerator, and a microwave.
Like a cottage.
Yes. Look, so that's, it's just not just for the one thing the man built, you know. He built a monstrosity of a structure. Staff does not disagree with, you know, agrees with that. But again, with the changing of times in our society, with the cost of housing going up, and with that, it's always, we like to leave options open for everybody. You know, they may not never do it, but somebody may want to. And you can't rent it out. It's not a rental property. It's basically something if you're, you have an older child that's still at home at the 20, 30, 40, you know, they can be there. Or a mother-in-law, father-in-law suite, something like that.
And that could now be built on the side of the property, right?
No, it'd be in the rear.
It'd be in the back?
Yes.
Other questions? We didn't mean to monopolize. Let's start down here.
No questions, just comments.
Yeah, okay.
I was going to say that maybe there should be some language in the new code to, or pertains to these neighborhoods, that has something to do with that they have to match the existing style of architecture that's already there, maybe provide some additional screening, fencing, landscape that's a little bit maybe more mature than what's otherwise usually required. Yeah. I can understand where they're, they're coming from, based on the nightmare that they've, you know, witnessed in their recent past. But I would say at least put that kind of language in there. So it's not just, you know, the cheapest way to get something built for, for their, what they need. That's all I have.
Peter, comments? No good thoughts? Todd?
I think what I heard is a, maybe a concern about the location of sheds and then a desire to prohibit accessory structures. But to understand correctly, the accessory structures in our code would also include sheds. So if you prohibit, if you prohibit accessory...
The current code, yes. So that's why, as you saw in the regulations, that's why we were actually pulling out utility and tool sheds as a separate category. And then everything else would be regulated under accessory structures based on billing code. What billing code regulates in terms of that, I think it's 400, up to 400 square feet as far as exempt from the billing code, and they consider that a tool shed, utility shed. Anything above that goes to a different category of billing code requirements. So as part of this, we are separating out utility sheds specifically for the three neighborhoods. In the remainder of the city, they still be all on accessory structure.
Right. And then was, did I understand you correctly that I guess staff's position is that there's so few lots, the question about keeping a shed or accessory structure under the side setback, there's so few lots that would really apply to? Is that, is that...
Yes, from a staff standpoint, you had so few lots. And again, and, and I don't think, and they can, in conversations I've had with Mr. Dixon and Ms. Smith, the whole thing has been, they wanted it to go all the way back, even behind the facade, rear of the home. And that was staff's issue. That, I mean, that's the backyard, and you can put it five feet from the side and five feet from the rear back there. But again, in looking at the code, nobody's going to be able to put, that was a unique case, that one home, because he's on a unique shaped lot. Again, the lots in this neighborhood tend to be unique shape, and he had room on the side to actually mitigate for setback. And he put this behind the front facade of his home.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
So is it right to say that what you're trying to do is you're trying to, to balance the rights of the homeowner to use their space the way they want to use it versus creating a situation which really, which really disturbs the neighborhood, that really, you know, creates a situation that's bad for the neighborhood? And that you, that what you came up with is what you think is staff is the right balance?
Staff professional opinion, yes. Yes.
I think that's a good summary, seriously, of what the issue is. I want to ask you a question about this gentleman's concern about, you're concerned about the sheds not being, and not subject to the building code, but maybe they should be anchored somehow?
But they're still subject to be anchored down. I mean, it can...
So, so that's already there?
That's already there. It's just the fact that some of the size requirements and all this, exempt from width of the door for ADA requirements, certain things like that. But no, it still has to be anchored down.
Okay. All right. All right. Anything else from the board? And if not, let's bring them back to us for, thank you, Ms. Van. Let's bring them for discussion. What are your thoughts?
So I think that banning accessory structures outright is probably an overreaction to this one abomination that looks like a commercial building stuck next to this house. So I think the city's done, you know, the best job it can to try to strike that balance between personal property rights and the rights of the neighborhood for value and aesthetics, et cetera. Any more micromanaging that we could do, I think, would be lost because we're not, you know, in that world on a daily basis. So I think this is as good as we can get for a compromise.
Other thoughts? Let me start on this. Andre, additional thoughts, different thoughts?
Well, different.
We're forgetting you, Peter. Matt's going to start my first.
Oh, sorry.
Any?
I have no other thoughts.
Okay, no.
I think that if this was an HOA, you probably could get away with that. But considering that these are individual city laws, I think the city has gone quite a bit of distance to, you know, compromise the two sides. And I have no issues with what's being proposed.
Yeah, I would say Mr. Bevko basically captured my thoughts.
I think so, too. I think this is what the third time we've heard this. And so finally, there is a resolution that the residents are happy with in that.
Happy is a strong word, but will accept.
Well, that's acceptable.
Any comments?
I support the staff on this.
Yeah, I think we're all seem to be of consensus here. So at that point, we will then look for a motion.
I'll move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Is that sufficient? Mr. Thomas, move for approval of...
Oh, God, I haven't done. Of code revision case number 1801. I had to go to the front of the page to get the number.
All right. We have a motion. Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. That then, I believe, brings us to old business, right? New business, unfinished business?
Just a little mouse bit from staff. I think Hope sent an email to everyone about the planning officials training workshop Friday, October the 4th. Wanted to know if anybody was interested in going. That staff will, city will pay for it if you guys are interested in going. Just please get back with Hope. Just get back with Hope sooner than later, by October, at least by a couple of weeks. The 25th, I think, is the early registration deadline. Let us know if you're interested in going.
Thank you. Any other unfinished or new business or old business? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.